The one time when I first married, he was five hundred pounds. He wasn't fat. He was fat. I seen him pick up about an acre and a half down there. Just on the six foot one, it's off the flathead. Give it around a block. He didn't drag it off. He carried it by an inch. Eighteen hundred pounds. That's how strong that was.
I wouldn't think that.
I just shoot me.
I hate golf.
Yeah.
Go to YouTube.
Yeah. Yeah.
Type in.
I've told many people, all commissioners, Bob, I served, when I started serving on the commissioners, I served with commissioners that were elected to the state. And I served all the guys that sit here as I serve with the new commissioners. And all the commissioners, he was the smartest commissioner overall. He'd take out the tour. Block the man. I mean, he had such a welcome. Now, the thing is about deep let you know. But he had such a, you know, you could point out there, you know, he got this signature there. What's made in Jersey City, so and so, so and so, and he can take what's made at. I mean, and he really knows what's made at. You see how hairy he is?
I haven't heard of him. I have heard of him.
So his, yeah, his knowledge, his self-confidence. I tell you what, he could be.
Yeah, I've heard of him, right.
We had one of our, one of our local town clippers was a U T two nine nine. I couldn't remember. And so, power supply on Unicar, because they come out, the price, they weren't sixty seven thousand. So I was still in town about it. And the rubber arms and everything. That's, John said, oh, that bullshit, he said twenty thousand fix it off. And I just described to John.
Okay, call the meeting door. And who does the roll call? All right, Mike? Boggs? Campbell?
Here.
Corlins?
Here.
Craig? Cullen?
Here.
Gross?
Here.
Paul? Hon, Nod? Pando, like my name. Yeah.
And Slater?
Here.
That's good. I'll never forget that. All right. No, it's an easy way for it. Okay, so is that give us a form? Six of nine. Okay, so that's correct. Not good with that. Okay, so we have the minutes of March twelve. We approve a certain budget.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motions up. The minutes are approved. Okay, we got the agenda here. And that's this thing over there, right? What I'm reading off of.
Yeah, okay. Yes.
All right, any motions to approve the agenda?
We approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good. Agenda's approved. Okay, so who's got the first lap? Flat revision, one eighty eight mark first drive?
If you luck, I can give a quick background just from planning and review side. So in your packet you'll see a copy of the plan. And the applicant first came to us back in March. And they had hoped to be on the April meeting, but as it worked out, they had just missed a deadline. And so, we put them on the, we let them know in May. And we had a couple revisions for them. You continue to pack it. It was four items. And we worked with the applicant to address all those. We, they resubmitted. And then we found that there's a couple more items that we needed to work out. One was the signed plan, which they have delivered tonight. And so, item number one dated April sixteenth comment list has been addressed. The second item regarding the fire hydrant. You can notice on the plan, applicant here again has addressed our concerns and proposed a fire hydrant between the two lots. So looking at the plan here, you can see how it's re-subdivided. And that comment has been addressed. And the third one was, they had shown the sewer easement, but we wanted to see the sewer line in that easement. And there again, they have been able to comply with that. So in our review of the plans, staff recommends approval. I think the only item is the pasture billing piece that is required before approval or wood conditions.
That's great.
Would be the only item for us.
And so, do we have to do anything about that, the pasture billing?
Oh, we can make it part of the subject. And since the applicant's here, do you want to say just a few things about the plan itself? Any comments?
Well, to start off with, the two lots, lot one and two, the original lot line goes northwest, southeast. My clients wanted to do was make sure that this was conducive for building on it. There's a large ditch just from the P T of the curb around towards Luden Hills. And if there's a reconfiguration of the lot, it would make it easier, a lot easier.
You're off.
The original lot line goes northwest, southeast here. There's a large ditch starting about right in the P T around there. It's up above here. So they want to make it more conducive for building a house on it. So we reconfigured the lot line to go, just split the lots in this general direction. So they could actually tie it to the road without requiring a lot of construction cost. But in doing that, we found out that the property line is right on this, their joiner's garage. So we resubmitted, talked to the owners. They agreed to do some land swapping here to get it off of the garage. Now we've got, now we've got the subdivision flat where everybody's G-hauling, I guess you could say. We increased the drainage up from ten, ten foot wouldn't have done it anyway since my original email. Increase it to thirty foot based on a twenty-five degree storm. It won't jump the banks from a twenty-five degree storm. Got a new fire hydrant here between one and two, which is going to now cover all four of these lots. Co-protection.
That takes care of the issue with the adjacent plan on the ground as far as.
Yes, sir. Sir. Any other discussion on this?
Yes. Are we ready to approve it?
Yes. We recommend approval contingent on then the pasture billing fee and I think that's it.
Okay, so is it?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay. So the next item we have is a discussion of the proposed Indian Point condo development on one forty-one West. Thank you, Brian. Okay. Oh, my full sound. You want to hear something?
You got big top. When you can do a big top. This is from proposed condo development. This is not quite, I should, now it comes back from NAPK, but it's not quite a concept idea. This is just a, a word grade up. Kind of give you feedback, see what you thought about. This is a proposed development. It's behind, in subway. Behind subway. It's got a fifty foot easement that crosses over the vacant lot there besides the.
Lot four or five.
So I just want to get your feedback and see what you thought about it. To develop like that with the pros coms.
What would the road in and out of that?
Dead center. I put the dead center to be just dead center of a sewer ground.
A bad lot.
Okay, so the pharmacy if you drive it in would be to the right.
That's correct.
Well, I know there's a lot of one. Yeah, grapes on site. There's a lot of grapes on site. So that's a challenge to me.
Well, it straddles, well, once we get to the concept, it's going to be substantially more complete. Probably going to have to take some of those roads and widen out, loop them out a little farther because of the setback requirements, things like that. We get some lots in there.
But do you require on the concept, like just five foot contours and then two foot on final class?
Uh, I believe so.
I think that's what your regulations are.
The check list. Then the putt itself, does it, and I have to go back to look at the original, but does it allow then for, how many units is it?
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four units as part of that original product document? Okay. And when was that approved?
Oh, no, 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 I haven't done anything yet. We're just here just trying to get y'all's feedback and to see what you think about it.
So it's not part of the original?
No, 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 no. Well, actually it was. It was part of Bluffs of the Harpeth. And then we vacated the flat back a long time ago. At one time it was half acre lots back in there, like Bluffs of, the current Bluffs of the Harpeth face. And then we just took it and combined all the half acre lots up into bigger lots. Of course, the Harpeths has lived back there in the back. They bought two of the lots from me. And then the guy that lives on lot one forty-six bought lot five. And so, but like I say, I was just trying to get your ideas and see what you think. See if you think this is something that y'all think is a bit beneficial.
This is lot five, phase two.
Phase two, correct.
So not in the putt though? It is part of the original putt. That wasn't vacated?
It's part of the putt.
It is part of the putt.
But it was vacated.
No, not lot five. Lot five, you may have vacated the original.
Oh, the original part of Bluffs of the Harpeth, yeah.
Now, the original phase two, but this is lot, phase two that had five lots.
Oh, yes, yes, yeah, correct, correct, correct.
About parking.
I'm sorry?
About parking.
Well, of course, the parking, there's two car, if you look at the drawings right here.
I know two.
You have two, you'll have two car garages.
Does that take the place of the two parking places? Is that what you're saying?
No, Brian, okay.
I don't know that question. I think this document, which is also an agenda night, it requires two parking places per unit. Now, is the garage taking place of two parking places?
Well, you'll have the garage plus you'll have access from the street, have the two parking lots in the street.
Twenty foot street? Do you have any parking in the street?
No, no, not on the street, in front of the.
There'd be second bank.
Yeah, right.
And if you're ever been to Ashley, if you, I'm going to model these after Ashley Place in Ashland City. If you go up by the old cemetery, the old city cemetery in Ashland City, up by Hindville, Bank of America building, it's closed down now. City cemetery is on the left, on uphill there over the Frederick grounds. And Ashley Place is to the right. Donnie Jones lives there, Bob Perry, this is also there, Push Fastway. This is where I got the idea there. Really neat, they're all brick condos. And they're fifty-five and over.
Two levels.
No, one level.
On level? Okay, so this is, this is targeting all citizens?
Yeah.
That's, that's like that.
All the party have been just approving.
I think it's a great idea.
An eighteen hundred feet.
I think it was too price range.
Yeah, there is, the three bedroom two bath will be two sixty-five, the two bedroom two bathroom will be two forty-five. And they'll be all brick, of course, no maintenance on outside. Homeowner fees will cover the maintenance and upkeep and everything. The only thing is, Mark, my attorney, told me that there's something with the federal mortgage laws that you can't restrict, you can't age restrict certain properties. And Daleen might even answer that.
That's right.
And you, well, you know it then. And so, we're going to try to work around that because as one of y'all pointed out to me, we're going to make this golf cart U T V accessible because they'll be private streets actually.
They're going to be private streets.
Yes. And so, the thing is about it, you don't want teenagers out there racing golf carts.
So how do they age restrict the villages of Florida where you have to be fifty?
I don't know.
One of the couple has to be fifty to move in. There's a hundred and fifty thousand people living there. So some, some in the law. I know the boys, as you were speaking of Ashland City, they haven't been successful in age restrictions because I know there's some younger folks that live up there.
There is a young couple, professional couple that didn't have been there. And I just think that we can park fifty-five and over, they'd be more successful.
Is terrain going to be?
Not on the front yard, not on these units here. These units around here will have basements under them. This, these won't, all of these will be one level, but there'll be basements, kind of like they did on the backside of Harpeth.
Right there.
Are these, do they contact?
No, no, we were, we were just trying to get that in there.
They're not going to put eighteen hundred square feet in that.
Exactly. And we're going to do, we're not going to do bumpers here, we're going to do store spaces, unfinished store spaces over the garages. Because over at Ashland Place, that was the biggest complaint when I talked to the residents up there, there was no place to put their junk, you know?
It's just, it's just streets.
It's over the garage? Yeah.
You can get it up.
From the garage, yeah, you can do all the old posts. All of them. Sure.
So one thing that we talked about is the entry coming in. And I believe with the putt, it was all private streets. And that needed usually a couple of trees.
You mean you're talking about through this right here, this point access easement?
I don't know. Yeah, you'd have to. Does we do that, that one line?
And then I was, yeah.
Lots of four thousand.
I think, you know, you're still working out the layout. You know, you likely have them all out here so that it's safe. This is what you want to pull in. I mean, that's, you know, you're working out some of these details that may not be quite that much. It's just something to look at because it is just for guests, right? And then each home will have, it's like a, is that two garage?
Yeah. Well, the reason why I did the clubhouse with more parking, we found, of course, I've got Harpeth Meadows, if you've ever been in there. And whenever there's a gathering at clubhouse, we don't have enough parking down there. And that's why I think it's a total grind that I would like to have as much parking as possible. Because when there's a birthday party or wedding down there, any type of function, people are out on the street parking. And at Halloween, y'all know what the night area is at Harpeth Meadows at Halloween. You don't, I know some, I know he does. But it is. Yeah. Do what?
Close the gate.
Yeah.
He's been halfway to wood.
Yeah. Now they can move to Harpeth Meadows.
So Carl, when you said golf cart access, is that on the existing road?
Well, of course, you know, Chatham County now issues a low speed plate. As long as you've got signals, blinkers, headlights, mirrors, you can actually get a low speed plate for use on this.
So your intention would be that they use that road?
Yes, they'll be using that road and then go to the subway, bank, the plenty. The only thing that I see to be a problem is crossing over to the dollar store or the grocery store, you know? We'd have to figure that one out.
But that one we have. Try for us.
But I mean, I mean, y'all.
Great idea.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, we had.
Can I get y'all the cost of?
How much should the?
H L A's can effectively be responsible for all the, certain.
Somewhere between one thirty-five and one eighty-five a month.
Start.
Yes. But that'll be set, will form a homeowner association, like that, set your fees and go.
They have to pay fifty-five dollars.
Three thousand dollars.
But this will be from, this will be from drywall.
Do you really need it?
In other words, they'd garnish the roof and everything.
I mean, you could have.
I'm thinking you're being responsible for it with drywall. This will be a.
As it comes out.
If you know my building, right, that's the only I do. I have to write and everything. Okay? Any, any other discussion? Do we need to, we ask any questions?
Only thing I just want him to do is talk to her and Larry and Mike there and see what we need to do as far as moving water down the road. I know it's going to be a process of months, but.
Yeah, I mean, certainly like utility matters, you'd be concerned about that.
We need to get the water and sewer back there, but it's going to be a moot concept plan and make it all work with the current zone. I don't even know the likelihood.
And that was going to be a question, y'all, what's the sewer capacity? What's the plan at by now? Eighty percent, eighty-one?
Eighty.
Last time I talked to Clint, y'all were seventy-eight percent of capacity. And that was about a year ago.
Yes, it's just shy of eighty.
So you're shy of eighty, so you can't handle it. I know the water district can handle it. And by the way, y'all can look, if you look on the flat, it is a partnership that will be held or dis. I said, there is a partnership. I have a partner on this project. Sir? Oh, yeah. Mr. West, so.
Jason?
Jason.
Please grab your paper.
Okay, if any other discussion needed on this?
If they reset the, the Harpeth, it's two lots.
Explain that to me, Larry, I'm trying to understand it. I've got joint access.
It's an easement, so public wanted to serve this property so it's still a plan.
I don't. If it was a singular house.
It's good. Multiple. And you'll probably at some point, if you're new on that plan area, probably need to look, signature need to amend up for your declarations. We're starting to amend and restate the existing declaration clause restrictions. Conformly in.
So you're saying we need to have homeowners.
Because I could have that one.
But we need to have the document. Plus, I said, you're saying now.
Yes, we probably have to be amended and restated. That's generally how it's done. Also could probably incorporate. It's a formally in.
Well, that could be the dollar.
Even though there's some arguments that say it's.
I know the person killed that.
It's different when you deal with the.
How long? You got both sides exchanged.
Yeah, and then of course you'll have to deal with the H L A.
Okay. Everybody think it's a good idea? You have it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
First of all. It makes sense. So moving on to the next one, it says discussion and vote as to whether or not to recommend for the board of commissioners. Text amendment to Article seven of zoning ordinance pertaining to outright permitted uses in C two, I one, some districts.
Right, you should have, well, we've talked about this before, we have.
Is that wording so one five?
Is that five?
Yes, yeah.
Should have a long sheet of that.
Number five.
Five on it. This is where we had discussed previously about removing many storied warehouses from C two, some district commercial into another zone. And the determine that the consensus was that we leave it to I one and I two. So this would remove this outright permitted use of C two, many storied warehouse facility, or storage facilities. Warehouse facilities. And would, by the language in the amendment, allow such outright in I one. The existing language is that warehousing and storage facilities are already allowed in I one. But just to make it absolutely clear, I was going to say including many storied warehouse facilities in I one. Your ordinance currently reads that I two, which is heavy in this industrial use, any I one use can be also used in I two zones. So that covers all of that.
So you can do an I one thing in an I two zone, but you can't do an I two thing in an I.
That is correct. You're absolutely right.
Okay. Let's try.
That's the way you got to understand it. In any event, this is the same matters we've talked about before. Now, now reduced to.
I move that we recommend this to the city commission.
I second it.
Okay, so Lou, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, this will go on to the city commission. I'll need the ordinance number assigned to that for next. And we've got some numbering discrepancies. I'll ask Mike to get with Debbie and make sure we don't have budget ordinances and other things numbered wrong. I think some of this has started earlier in the year.
So number six here, another mouthful, I'll read it. Discussion and vote as to whether or not to recommend to the board of commissioners text amendment to Article seven of zoning ordinance. Ordinance fifteen dash zero zero three, section seven point zero one zero through seven point zero nine zero for correction purposes and changes due to state law amendments.
I move we recommend it to the city commission.
Second.
So Lou, any discussion?
How about just a little bit of discussion to make sure I got the right exhibit going on in the city.
Number six right here?
Yeah. Well, that's the correct ordinance. It's the exhibit to it. If you recall, this was brought about when we digitized all of the existing documents. And then when we went back and pulled off some of the digital copies, we have, have discovered a few arrows and typos. Basically, it's worth Abby finding to pick it up or some other program trying to transpose digitally. So that's how we got to that point. Now, we have taken the first part of the US and converted it over to a Word type of document. And between now and next Thursday, I'll ask Mary to verify that we've got the right, we've got several copies going around.
Yes, and this one that's marked off the six that I have in front of me, this is the correct one. I think my only question, this is for Larry actually, is that this last piece, if you turn to the, oh, gosh. Seven point zero nine zero point three, other boundary requirements? And you match that up with the other item, see how we're stopping at one on this last page? And my thought was, this needs to be included.
I agree.
And so, this would be the final copy. That's the only difference between these.
If you could just send that to Mike and I as a, whether Word dot.
Sure.
Then we won't get this confused.
It was in that last email, but I can resend. Yes, and this is it.
I have a question. I copied off the internet, all mine are red, under seven point oh nine three. Now, this, does that include in what we're considering now? Because the wording here says it only goes to seven point oh nine oh.
Let me see that.
Well, that's, is that one I know dot three, Tom, you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, so dot three, so that would include everything under one I know dot, right? After.
That's the question.
Any, any. After one I know?
And then it keeps going. So you have, you know, oh nine oh dot four.
All the way to dot nine.
All the way, yeah.
All right, so it should be, it should read at the top, I did, and correct me if I'm wrong, seven point oh nine oh dot.
Dot nine.
Nine. We'll make that correction.
So I think, I think I remember last year, we had a lengthy discussion going through how this was not in compliance with the state law. We needed to bring it in compliance. And we were walking through everything.
Yeah, we've already, we've already, we've got down to the final, the final, final. Problem was, we had so many motions going back and forth email. I just wanted to make sure we had the right digital documents so we can put it in Word and attach it to the board of commissioners.
Yes, because this is what you had sent me and the only change I've made, which you can see in the here is that.
You can really handle it.
Yeah, I can, that'd be just as.
Please do.
Yeah, yeah, let's just.
Just send me.
Put on that.
If we're just giving it a workout, we don't want to do. All right, you get about five emails back and forth, cut and paste, and it gets a little.
Yeah, but I'm comfortable with that side, I'm confident.
Okay.
Yeah, addresses everything we've talked about.
And that was a lot of discussion before.
Okay, so the motion's on the floor. We've had the discussion, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So number six. Number seven. Discussion for future drafting and recommendation to board of commissioners.
Discussion for future drafting and recommendation to board of commissioners, Article seven of zoning ordinance. Off street parking requirements, adding a new subsection G to four dot zero one five.
So a quick summary on that. You know, we had the Dollar General come in and we realized that they actually are having to do more parking than what's really necessary. Because they're having to count that interior space. And so with storage, it basically penalizes retail establishments. Because they're then required to have parking based on square footage and it's just an overall amount. Well, initially we looked at doing revamping the parking regs and there are so many rambling pages of parking regs. Started on the process, looked at it and realized it would be, you know, a significant undertaking. And so to tackle this issue where we've got, you know, retail establishment, this is just commercial. That, that has a storage that really shouldn't impact their parking necessarily. Then we would allow them a break on it. So we don't allow them an exception. They don't think they need to take it, that's fine, you know, but, but this would provide some flexibility. Also in the, and I need the list in front of me. I guess everybody's got theirs. Oh, here it does, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so I can run through the.
That's cut and finished.
Yeah, that's perfect. Yeah, this is, this is fine. So this is just for discussion, not something I think to vote on tonight, but.
We'll come back to you in the ordinance.
Yes.
If you'll give us something to say.
But I think it's good to discuss this before providing to you official letter. So essentially we're looking at, you know, providing this exception to fall at the end of four point, you know, oh one five. And what it would do is it would allow you to reduce your parking and say you're a really small establishment. You could reduce it up to fifty percent or no more than four spaces. So whichever is greater. Then the, the first item out of the four, that's the one about the storage that I mentioned, it really only applies to these smaller types of businesses. We feel like there's a cost burden to providing parking, you know, at two hundred square feet per space times, you know, X dollars for asphalt, that sort of thing. That we can look at these reductions. The second item, it, it's a chance to encourage maybe bicycle parking. And so what it's saying is that for every four spaces that require. Of parking, you can, for every three bicycle spaces, then you can reduce one parking space for. And, and this is something that even in this, existing businesses, if they wanted to, do that in the downtown area, say, you know. Or if they wanted to have bike racks in an existing space, that's something they can come and do.
Would the bike rack have to be in an existing space or could they just have this bike rack up on there?
Yeah, they may change that to put a tree in it and then space that they essentially do away with that. The second one is, here's where we're trying to encourage maybe larger trees preservation, for instance. Then you're pointing if there was perhaps any trees, I imagine of all the writing that there's not. But, you know, if they happen to have some existing trees on site, this is a way to encourage the developers to save those. And they can reduce their parking requirement. And then the last one is motorcycle. And right now, the way I have it written, it's basically you could change one parking space for four motorcycle parking. Now what, because we may want to do is look at, well, if you're doing one for one, you're not really losing any less parking. It's a cost you will send them out to. So we could look at reducing that. It could be a one for one. Like if you provide one motorcycle, you can do away with one car space. You know, that would be a much higher requirement. I didn't write that way, it wouldn't be in that certain place. That's why I wanted to. On these four exceptions.
Just so you don't make the parking spaces sore.
So we have a ten feet wide. We did talk about, well, really my colleagues at work about maybe a percentage of compact parking, but it gets so complicated already with them.
And people don't pay attention to compacts. Larry will pull his big truck into a complex.
We just got called out.
It would be like our previous engineer suggested, smaller parking spaces. And I suggested that he go out and open the doors of his truck and see if it can fit in the tenth. And he couldn't get in his truck.
Yeah.
What, what, depending on what feedback you give us as to the final language you want in these items. Our proposal to me was that at this, at the very end of this four point oh, four point oh one five. Reimprove the subsection capital G and then it would go into the language and say, notwithstanding the foregoing requirements. The following exceptions may apply, I guess instead of shall, if we wanted to amend ourselves.
Are these numbers, you know, per square foot in these exchanges of bicycle owners, is that fairly standard in Tennessee municipalities? Are these pretty standard approaches?
It is. This is actually from Portland, Oregon. That's where I got some of these, just because they're trying to encourage. But Metro Nashville has a, has a full blocking requirement for the downtown area, much more expensive than this. But this is just maybe putting a toe in water, if you will, kind of easing ourselves into it. It's not a full revamp.
This is right out of Portland in terms of the numbers that it uses.
Correct. It's very similar. Now, they can have the retail reduction and I think they had, you know, but that, that's basically what. So we've seen it across the country. There's other streets that have these.
This is not the most bicycle friendly photography in the world around here. And I would hesitate to guess how many bicycle lists are gonna ride into the topic there.
Yeah, that's a good point. You know, they don't have to take the exception. It's more of a market rate. So if the developer feels like, you know what, I've, I've got a business down here and I could, you know.
If the city or the state's willing to lighten some of these roads and put bicycle lanes, then indeed something else may happen, but right now.
And, and there are those, you know, assists. So like now they're having small motors on them too, as soon as light their bikes. And so it's easier to get up hills and things like that. But I, I have scooters and so I thought about the motorcycle parking. But it's just a discussion during the feedback. Is this something that you're trusting? We can formalize it and bring it forward or?
Are you comfortable with the language exactly as written or do you?
I'm sure you'll edit it, so.
No, I don't worry about that.
I don't plan on editing.
We, we, we don't, we don't worry about the wording. We know you'll get it right.
But what, once again, what, can you repeat your kind of option on, on number four with motorcycles?
Yes.
I had it in my head and then it just slid out, so I need to, need to think about that again.
Sure. It's, it's not as restrictive as maybe it could be, or not as big as friendly as it could be. So right now, if you had a parking space and you wanted to convert that to four motorcycle spaces, you could. But it's not a one for one. So instead of, you know, one motorcycle space equal to, equal to one parking space. That's, I could say that, but that's not what it's saying.
So I.
It's a four to one, I guess.
I mean, when I look at this, I, I'm asking myself, what are the behaviors we're after? So if somebody's building a retail establishment, what kind of behavior are we trying to do? So if I'm building a retail establishment, I want as much customer frequent as I can. So I probably will pay the developer costs in the short run. To get some parking spaces down so I can get my heart on eye on building whatever I'm doing. So, so I don't know, you know, what are we trying to, yes, protect a tree, yes, encourage bikes. But is there an effect where a popular establishment starts spilling over into city streets or creating congestion in the size of a parking lot? Is that an impact that we have to worry about when you start to about?
Well, and this one doesn't, this is not really addressing that type of thing. I mean, it really came about because of the storage space from the Dollar General. And realizing that there is a cost involved when we have these parking, and a lot of cities in the country are getting away from parking max or minimums. Just because it, it's sort of market driven, you know.
Right, so we want more space.
That you, well, yeah, the, the market should decide what it should be. I, I don't see that.
And to get away from the very.
And, yeah, and having a barrier and things like that.
That would be the other.
Yeah. And so this just allows an exception that developers could take if they want. And it sort of encourages, I mean, given that. You know, our very outdoors in the community encourages bicycles. So having, you know, the tree exception and the bicycle, it's logical.
I think it would depend on what kind of business, commercial station, let's say it's a restaurant near the interstate. And they might have a motorcycle. It's hard to say. It just gives them options.
The other way I see it is they just give the business a choice of what they're gonna do. Like you said, with Dollar General, they, they don't mind the current ordinance that much. Because they probably like a lot of parking, but.
Could cut down on, you have, they publish on the grant, very interesting cause of strict language.
Right. You have a lot of storage inside.
No, he's in there.
Yeah.
I mean, our Dollar General only had nine hundred acres per feet of storage up there.
Yeah, five hundred and nine, yeah.
Five hundred.
Yeah.
Something like that. But think about some of these other more. Hard layer type stores, maybe a lot more storage.
Yeah, and I'm really crafting this thinking about mall and pop business. This one, about five thousand or less.
Yeah. So your question is, do we want you to go ahead?
Right, we could formalize this and adopt it at the next meeting. We could let it sit, think about it, adopt it to the following.
Does anybody here think it needs to sit?
I don't think.
Okay. Instead of, let's go forward and formalize.
Okay. We'll do that.
I haven't said.
Time deals, all deals. Okay, so we have a motion to adjourn?
Well, we got, we got one other thing that John asked us to look at, or we suggested that they looked at. And that is trying to come up with new definitions in zoning ordinance and address. How they're worded as outright permitted uses, the example that I used before, filling stations. That's a bigger piece of work than I do, I think. And from what I can tell, it's not budgeted. So that's gonna be a city commission thing to deal with. Rather than that, money's for playing, to get all that done. But also for the schematics that are outdated within the body of the subregs.
The details, yes.
Detail drawings.
That was all.
Schematics and updated paving schedule, profiles and things like that. That's an expensive item of work. There's not money in the budget or projected budget for that. So we're hesitant to spend any time on that if it's not available.
It seems to me that that's something that's pretty important to get done.
Well, I mean, I've expressed this before at the last city commission meeting, but.
Mike and I discussed it some.
You're a few year, you're already a few years behind, but of course we've had five years of no growth too. Maybe to redo the entire needs zoning ordinance and the entire need set of subregs at some point in time. But, you know, we're talking about spending a lot of money. It's got, money's gotta be here before you can offer us support. So we have not done any, anything further on those items in C one and C two. In that regard, so the city commission needs to take a look at those items before we pass a final budget to see what, what you can and can't get done in the next fiscal year.
And just to update real quickly, Larry, you may not be able to, we did have a contract that we submitted a couple of years ago. That we're gonna stand behind. Yeah, for the update of the details. So that's something you want to look forward to. Oh, yeah, excuse me. My engineers in our office can help with that. So we can analyze those details and wrap up the subregs.
But there's not enough money in the current projected next fiscal budget to cover that.
We have a line item even from this past year. We did on the crease.
And Mike and I discussed what was meaning that you all would talk about it.
You're saying we have increased?
We have not increased the line.
Well, a few, a few projects and you'll, you know, a few projects come along and you'll.
Yeah.
And they will claim money.
So right now, this is of the commissions, of the city commissioners' court?
It'll be in city commissioners' court. You're exactly right. Per strength.
And then I'm curious, are we getting any signals today?
No.
No, all right, so.
No team meeting?
No team meeting.
All right.
Uh, just as an FYI in case I'm not around, I've given Mary and Mike a packet with the entire history of Blessing and the Heart of Booth. Which is, was a very painful episode.
Larry says he'll never repeat.
Well, it's, it was, you know, it was old petty law and old. A developer who went under and got foreclosed on. Then another developer came along and he just barely went by and escaped foreclosure. It took forever and never did build it out. Had lots of problems on getting everything done, tying weight bonds. It was just terrible and still terrible. Uh, you know, we, we did this on forty foot wide streets and now you've got. Another forty foot wide street. And of course, if you have parking on each side, you can barely get a fire truck in these developments. I'm not, I'm not knocking that at all as far as the proposal, but you have to take all these things into account. We've got some conservation design things to look at. What is the beneficial use of the common area and the topo to be dealt with. They have to have their own separate detention from the other detention for the other values that was occurred with the detention fines. So there's a lot of.
Did the property settle in then pretty much already?
I would imagine.
I doubt that it has much of a pass.
Just wants it to come on down, like downstream on.
Mr. Chairman.
Without, I don't know, public comment portion is on the other for discussion only, but. We've got some distinguished guests with us tonight and I just wanted to acknowledge both of them and ask them to recognize them if they had any comments.
Okay, so. You got anything to say?
Can you introduce them to me?
Commissioner Glenn McEnnis and Commissioner Bob Stoller.
Okay, so Glenn and Bob are either, is there anything you'd like to address?
Um, I'd like to say, you're sitting in my chair, Mike, I'm sitting in your chair. I love, I can see how you. Somebody tall. I was wondering who sat in my chair, but I.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Bob?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I, I have one other thing. The mayor and I just finished our first game of disc golf down at Burns Park. There's now officially nine baskets out there and we just did the whole gauntlet and what fun that was.
How many musketeers did you get?
I'm sorry.
How many musketeers did you get?
Um, I don't seem to have.
I think Glenn has a natural repellent to them that I, I, I don't possess. Corey was not nearly as bad off as me either.
But you, there's some truth to that. Some people are horses, attract musketeers where some people don't.
My wife, my wife, she can go outside and just comes in with welts on her.
But I appreciate you all, everything that you all do. Thank you.
And I'll, I'll bring you that some information at the, after the general meeting. I'll be going to a little more in depth on the vested rights laws. That's always good to know if you have a project that seems to strangle out in the future in multiple phases.
Okay, so.
Lovely chair.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. Anything else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Well, don't, don't see now, that's actually quick my chair, Glenn. That's why whenever I sit down. It takes off the arms. Yeah, that's, whenever I get, whenever I get in, I just push down.
When does it grab your memory? Where do you, where do you get the air for the disc golf?
Just their resaturizer.
No, no, it's a special frisbee that goes far away.
But, yeah, this is already, this is already approved once before. Okay, but not the, not the way back.
I just don't think you're allowed to adjust it, like changing a harness.
He's saying there's something up in here.
There's something in here. It's gonna straight down.
What is it?
Right here, right here it goes straight down, though.
He's not showing any.
Off the parking lot.
This is an engineering captain who's driving here.
Which, because when Brian was talking about, he seemed to bear us. He was just like, yeah, it's kind of bad this way out. And I was like, yes, it is.
It's hard to say if you wanna, wanna get the blessing of moving forward, this, get rid of all that junk.
These are how they go up there. What has it got there, other than the trucks?
Illegal trucks?
Is that, is that illegal?
Yes, it is.
Well, I'm asking, is, well, tell the city manager if any forces can. No one around here enforces code.
We talked about the legal.
If you don't, if you don't have a site plan approved on a commercial property, you can't just use it for warehouse. Construction.
I was great. You made me one of the first ones.
But, you know, I think this is followed by a breach.
I went behind the, I went, and where the parking lot ends, I went to the screen, it's a tall island. And I didn't even see where.
You got a second?
Just me?
Yeah, you individually.
I was just coming by my.
Okay.
Grab a truck, grab a truck.
Well, I screwed up then.
That's a good idea.
They're gonna need storage.
I'm over fifty-five. I could use it. I can't pay that much money.
We couldn't hear how much we said.
I'll just, I'll rent.
We couldn't hear how much we said. Is this? Purchase price?
Two forty for fourteen hundred fifty? Eighteen hundred for two sixty-five. I learned something new tonight.
What? Enough to retiring from Michigan.
Francis A. Gross the third.
I am.
That's a hell of a title.
Well, you know.
Frank.
My father is Frank. My father is Frank. And then I was telling, I was telling someone the other night, that, you know, they were asking about that, cause I take it that. And I said, well, you know, growing up as a kid, you know, they always call your name out on roll on the first day and it would be Gross Francis. And then you'd explain, oh, no, call me Tony. And then somebody put together that your name was Francis Anthony Gross and your initials were fag.
Bag three.
Right, so that's what you get for having a name that was created in like the late eighteen hundreds and passed down to you. You have to suffer the.
Not bad, right?
I had to first and second grade, your teacher calls you, rest me in the center, I wouldn't be fine. You can call me Tony.
You're talking about me.
Well, my last name is S.L.E.I.G.H.T.E.R. Slater. When I was in the army, I was called Slaughter, Slicker, Slider.
Well, Slaughter's pretty good, right?
I was ever, matter of fact, they were calling my name one time and I didn't recognize any of the names. Finally, buddy said, that's you, Chuck, that's you. So I come running up there and the guy says, how do you pronounce your name? And I said Slater. He's, why don't you put an A in there like everybody else?
Uh, where is that place in actual?
They're, they're, I've been up there. They're, they're pretty nice little places, but I, there's actually, cause I knocked some doors up there. That's small.
How to get through?
Oh, gosh, I can't. No, but, uh, Jones, Dot lives there. Yeah, Dot lives there.
Is it on Highway twelve?
No.
No, it's off.
It's off Highway twelve.
I just can't remember exactly the quarter that it is. They're, they're nice little places, dude.
Is it the road that goes up a lot of fairgrounds there?
Oh, God.
No, 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 it's, it's a lot.
Cause he missed the fairgrounds on.
That's big, small, that's.
I think it's like a lot of.
Your neighbor, two doors down. Did you know someone lived down there?
So I was standing like this up the other day and it's been a while and I might have needed a little bit to the tree.
They got that before.
That was my first round ever. Glenn's course is the, the disc, disc golf pro, so he was showing all this fancy, helping me find my disc. Cause I threw it at all the tall grass. Type two there. So I still, I ran home and took a quick shower. I left the park at six thirty and somehow made it down here by. I just compared my.
Well, you're fast.
But I, I, I probably still have, I still have ticks.
I had to, I had to go play soccer.
And then I ran home and back here.
Friend of mine's father passed away and his son was at the cemetery and they were burying him. But he said, well, they had to get, uh, bring up his name. What it was, it's got run into service and his correct name was L.A.N.K. of L.A. They had all his military papers messed up, L.A.N.G. of L.A. He spent four years in the military, went all the way up and down, never could get his papers changed. They got discharged with that name on it, so he could get a VA on, he went to court and his chances.
There is, not fight the system, just go with it.
Alright.
Why is everything a bloats in the suburbs?
Yeah, we do, yeah, yeah. I think, yes, we are. I still see Jay, that had lunch with him this year, yeah. He is. I feel I asked him about the, the parking regs. I was like, do you have any bikes? He goes, I've got my one bike. Do not reduce the rest of the parking.
Park, old age of here. I'm talking to you. I'm not gonna see if you get out of your truck, because he was out of his truck.
Yeah, that proves it.
That was the end of that. I just.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it is extra, uh, costs, you know, associated with it, but also.
Leads to banged up cars.
It's the price of doing business, you know, it's the, well.
Well, that's what we were talking about. What's the name of that place in Cleveland Hills? Trader Joe's, Trader.
Yeah.
Have you ever gone there? It was parked. I said, about that big, you can't get him out of your vehicle.
Yeah, and they're always full, every single one of them, yeah, they're, they're very popular. Yeah, how's everything going with you?
Good. Don't do much anything.
That's a good life, yeah.
I like it sometimes.
And get the little, yeah, it's been nice this week. Hopefully it's a rain though. I tell you, my, my garden, everything is just crisp.
Seventeen days.
Gosh, that's August.
Yeah, that's for this time of year.
It's, it's funny how if it doesn't rain, I get sad. You know what I mean? If you have too much rain.
Hurry up. Alright, alright.
Alright. Did you hear it move out yet? No, he's renting, he's renting from lady.
Yeah, but I don't think it's ready.
Or lady, it's not right. He moves himself. Well, his daughter mate took a turn about it. She made, she made, he made her lost stuff. But he's walking a little walk around somewhere. The yard I went by face. I didn't mean to call him, I said.
I called him and he said, well, just come up. He said, don't worry about all these people, they'll just come on in.
Oh, who's there now?
He was a man check.
Well, he has time, two year lease, but he didn't say.
I don't know whether he was out there for boss or moves or progress.
Well, but, um, another year I meant to participate in the yard sales, so.
Is there a city one yard sale here? I haven't seen anything on this one. We haven't been able to.
I can't get ready for it either.
I can't believe it. Ronnie didn't know.
Did y'all go to Paris?
Yeah. Much darker. We were made down at, I would go church with him. Tony missed there.
How's he doing?
He's doing good. He's just, you know, he's finding out how hard it is to keep up a house, but he's, he got no help, you know. By himself and he, he, he's got eight acres and he cuts all these bunch, almost a bunch of slack he does. And, and he can't, he can't do it by himself. And he bought a new mower, you know, forty, four thousand dollars and that was huge. Huge mower. Sixty he cut, you know, the time he gets through.
They're not gonna start again.
Yeah, and, and just different things are happening and he's basically got a little water in it. And he never leaked, supposed to ever leak to people. We were real good friends of people that live there, their, their daughter and son-in-law. And, uh, they said it never had leaked. It just, during that rain, they had it three or four days, a little water come in. And he had got an estimate for doing that, thirteen thousand something dollars to. They come in and cut the concrete out and put a channel in there, you know, and then.
Thinking of Richmond?
Yeah, yeah. But, but it wasn't bad. It was just a little. And then they put a, they run all that water to a certain place and put a sump pump on it. Yeah. They had come in and dig, and they go around the walls and go sit and dig out about twelve inches all the way around the floor. And then dig, then they bust it up and dig down deep and put that trench and they put a, yeah, pipe and stuff. Running all that water to it. One slot in the corner, I guess, and that's. But he's not gonna have it done, I don't think. Tony Campbell.
What?
What are you up to?
Well, I wanted, I called me about something the other day.
Oh, yeah.
Thinking about it.
That, uh, that road widening.
Yeah, Lori, Lori put a whole package together.
I got it.
Okay, photographs, accident reports.
I got it.
I don't know, at least one fatality, but what we were asking for, as I remember, was to widen out the shoulders, turn lines, let up lanes and harbor medicine. Harbor through trail and maybe it would lose court. I don't know that the justice is right there, but that's what we were asking for.
Well, you didn't get it.
Well, we don't stop push.
That's my thing. That's my thing, yeah. I wanna know where it's at. Hey, thanks, uh, Bob.
See you, Bob.
That's, I, that's what I wanna know, is where it's at.
What kind of studies they did, I'm not gonna say.
I would too. And see, here's the thing. They had a, uh, they had a planner and the meeting was in twenty thirteen that you had. She's gone. The RPO coordinator is gone.
But he was pissed because we turned that in without going through him.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah. Now, the first RPO meeting in Maryland, he would have really pissed to talk. I didn't know anything about RPO and all this other work. They wanted to send a commission.
Honestly, it's political bullshit.
Yeah, it is. It's another level bureaucracy that, that they're having. Do, do you get the? I still get emails from somebody at TDOT and they're having an RPO training session.
White blood on the twenty-fourth of June. Daryl plugged me into that, so I'm, I'm on their list now, yeah.
I didn't think Diane, somebody sent me emails.
But I'll be there.
But like you say, he would, he would, he, it was obvious, he would really pissed.
Really?
Because we've got, we got, we talked with the ladies later and then the TDOT people come out here and, and Lori and I talked about, told us just exactly what to do. And we did, we put together a whole package.
She told me, uh, or it was written in the folder. There was like three or four people from TDOT here. And of course, I'm on like, I'm on like my seventh person at TDOT talking to people. I had phone calls this afternoon and, and no one can tell me where this stuff is and I just, ugh, but I got, I'm trying to track it down.
Okay, well, I just, I kept thinking about it after you called me.
Yeah.
And I remembered what I was asking for.
It was June of twenty thirteen.
That sounded about right.
Yeah.
And like you say, we met over here. Went through it and then a month later, we went to the first RPO meeting with Ethan and Lori.
Really?
And God was really pissed. I mean, it was obvious too. Oh, yeah, shut that off, surely.